One day, one hour per day, four days a week. That's all there. Public comment. This is our one chance for public comment. Take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Jeremy, second on that. Ed, full of additions, under the business administrator's report. And then new business, D to authorize superintendent. For something between meetings here.
Some new business you said?
Yes, sir. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed in our last little meetings, we don't have a board comment section, but I thought in years past that there was one.
It was. We can put that down after old business.
That would be great.
So after old business, we'll have a next year board comment.
Would you like to be standing up?
Yes, please.
Actually, a question to you.
Yes.
Just thinking because I watched the town on on MAD TV, and they did something similar where people can comment in the beginning. Sometimes they, we go through things and it's like, wow, I really have a question about that or a comment about that. Will we leave time at the end? People can?
So we can, we can, we, we used to do two public comments, so we have thirty minutes, so we can do fifteen minute public comments.
That seems reasonable to a little bit of once in a while, but yeah.
So, yep, have that just for the comments you'd like. Is everybody okay with that? All right, so I have a motion, second. We have some amendments. Jen, did you get all that? Good? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. All right. Approval of the minutes of the April seventh board meeting. Take a motion to approve. Motion, Sherri, second by Jeremy. Any discussion? That's okay?
Line 105. Last name needs another S at the end. It happened again on 29. And then these again are really minor. On line 233, listed out people who are filling committees with colon, and then that one just happens to have a second one. And I told you guys last time that it was gonna be 247, there's a TH, and I'm just assuming it was supposed to say the.
Anything else? Team in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. And I will take a motion to approve the April 7th non-public minutes. By Jeremy, second. By Sherri. Anything there? No? Okay, all right. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. All righty. Okay, this was really rude. Here's your second not in public comment.
I know, that's why.
I think that's where it usually is. Any comments yet? Seeing it's on there, I'll leave it open. All right. We're gonna keep going. Acceptance of the consent agenda. You have your board policy, BEDH, just public comment participation in board meetings. Your principals report, your middle and high school reports, your enrollment reports, your capital reserve fund balance, and your CIP. Did you also see Ed on the enrollment reports?
Yeah.
They've broken down.
Yeah.
Maybe really break into the numbers a little bit more. But that's kind of all the information that everybody's been looking for over time in one document that will continue monthly to be updated. So is there anything you want to pull out of the consent agenda?
Nothing, just a general comment that in three school years, the high schools lost 110 students. Seven to six fifteen. That is an alarming number of students leaving. Like, I don't, I don't know.
It's graduating out, or is it?
I don't know. It's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
You lose one in six, basically seven students.
It's been a big decline, but I think more so.
I think this helps too. I think like conversation runway to have this breakdown.
Absolutely, to be able to see what, I mean, I just moved it here, but I broke down, at the middle school, we have, our population is 14% of the seventh graders, 15% of the eighth graders. But a total of the whole school, because of the sixth graders going in, we're 10.3%. Paying a ton of money. At the high school level, our ninth grade is an half percent of the ninth grade, 9.3% of the 10th grade, 11.3% of the 11th grade, 12% of the 12th grade. So 11% of all is our population at the high school. And then the other one that was interesting to me was to see that 37 students, 17% of Madison students, don't attend any of the Madison Elementary, Kent Middle, or Kent High School. So I think that could be some of the number for the high school that we're missing, but all, but not enough to take it all on. So, but yes, looking at that, it's very interesting.
That's homeschool and the child schools?
That's, that's everybody who's not attending the Madison. Yep. All right, so I have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Do I have that, Jen?
Nope, you don't.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jeremy, second. Ed, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstaining, none. All right, Memorial Day holiday is the 26th. There will be no school that day. SAU 13 board meeting, board meeting is gonna be on the 2nd of June.
Here.
This library, we said the Rootick Library, but are we big enough? I think, yeah, no, I think the art room is the size we need.
Sure, we can do that.
So in the art room, and that will be immediately followed by the Madison board meeting. And if we set up in here, we just move into here.
Sounds great. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would it, would we have to set up in the room and possibly actually broadcast the SAU 13 meeting?
Oh, we could, and then just stay there, then we can stay there.
What time is it?
Six o'clock, a half hour earlier.
I don't know if the, I'll go ahead, but.
I don't think they do, but I think we've done it before when it was here.
Sure.
I have no problem with that.
So it's at six?
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't start at?
We'll start a little bit later that evening, probably about 6:30. Yes. So we'll set up in the art room?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. Done. Principals.
Start off by introducing three people that are going to present to the board about our MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. That has been an ongoing journey for us as a leadership team. So have Diana Hayward, Chrissy McDonald, and Jen Bent. Pass it over to them.
Welcome.
Well, she already introduced us, but I'm Chrissy McDonald, the school counselor.
I'm Diane Hayward, the special ed teacher.
So as Heather said, today, she shared the multi-tiered system of support, which is MTSS, you'll hear that from now on, at Madison Elementary School. We're currently in year one. Using the MTSS model to provide a structured, data-driven approach to supporting all students, ensuring that each student has access to the appropriate level of instruction and support across all areas, including academics, behavior, social, emotional, and mental health to succeed as a whole person. We're happy to answer any questions from the board that may arise at our presentation, because each slide might answer your questions hopefully as we move along. So Diane, I'll share a little information about where we've come from and how it has been integrated into our MTSS process.
So as many of you know, we have, we were running it under an ARTI model. Some of you know it as response to instruction, some of you know it as a response to intervention. However you know it, it's a system of responding to action with intervention as needed. And you know that, you know, Madison Elementary did excellent work in that area. We were recognized as a swift school of excellence through the DOE. And we're, I'm super grateful of that. That's sort of when I came in. And because of that, we have continued to follow most of the norms from the, from the RTI framework. RTI is broader. It's a broader framework which encompasses RTI, sort of in that academic piece. BT3, some of you may remember that as our behavior model. That was once there as well. That's under that MTSS, MTSS framework. So MTS, RTI, and BT3 all share their common goal of supporting students and what they need. MTS focuses on this wider range of needs though, so it looks at the needs of the children, students, as well as their family, as well as the staff. So it focuses on like social, emotional, behavior, academics, culture, professional development, family engagement, sort of in this continuous side of looking at what we need as a school. You know, RTI used a three-tiered method of organizing children. In MTS, it's really a, it's like a language shift, so they're looked at in terms of levels. The foundational level, the universal level, the additional level, intensified level. And the need for MTS arose with belief that use would allow us to support, like all students, family, and staff across a lot of need areas, sort of in an organized, proactive way.
So like Diana mentioned, the MTSS model looks at three different levels, the first level being universal. And what that looks like here, as we support students with their academic behavior and S E L mentioned, needs, is looking at providing evidence-based instructional methods, programming, things like that to all students. Really thinking about using universal design for learning as a way to promote student engagement, provide differentiated learning opportunities to students, so all students can access high-quality instruction. Part of this also incorporates our, like our responsive classroom model that we've been doing a lot of work on and training on over the past few years since I've been here. But that piece is embedded throughout all academics, and also hits that behavior in the as well. We also, at the universal level, look at how we can progress monitor students, use universal screenings to identify those students, and track their progress at least three times a year, sometimes more, once they hit that additional support level. But this is a good starting point for us to come together with the different teams that we have in place to have that conversation around what our students need and how we can best meet those needs through.
So then we move into, it's like a fluid motion, whether it's go intensified or back into universal supports. Here is what additional supports might look like at MES right now.
You want to close that door, sorry.
Students are matched to their need based on instruction and support. It's timely. There's evidence-based research, resources targeting their skills. There's that added layer of prevention that's aligned to the universal support. And it's continuum based on knowledge and skills of students, and uses the teaming process to support the whole child. So it allows us, like we've been saying, to be proactive and not waiting until those students are struggling or falling through the cracks and really just trying to stay on top of it. It's that added layer of prevention to align to that universal support that all students are already receiving. Targeted groups might include any tutoring that's happening before school, after school, still includes those RTI groups, or for me specifically for counseling, that looks like small groups in a short term. And it's evidence-based, again, targeting those skills for growth. So staff might meet regularly to collaborate in a numerous amount of ways. So some examples of that is our child study team, when we get together regularly to talk about the students in each grade level and how are they doing, not just academically, but behaviorally, socially, emotionally, and mental health, what are the other needs, so we can reach them as a whole child. And then there's the progress monitoring that Jen also talked about. We do that throughout all levels. Just kind of keeping track of the data, skills, checking their growth along the continuum. So when I'm talking about that, it's really looking at one area and seeing how they're growing and progressing on that continuum. And that's kind of what I'm excited about, and I know most of us are too, about that year too, trying to get into how are we tracking that a little bit more, since this is year one.
And so, you know, similarly to what Chrissy said, the intensive supports are also, you know, evidence-based programs, but they're the tools and the staff that we have to respond to kids who have the greatest needs, who have like the most intense needs. So as their needs become greater or more intensive, we drill down and find the right resources for them. And it's not just for kids who are identified with special, you know, with individualized educational needs. It's really for all kids, so it's really looking at the entire school, whether they're part of, you know, receiving academic supports or behavioral supports. As their needs grow, our focus sort of narrows.
I think Chrissy touched upon it, and you did too, Diana, but, you know, you used to hear people saying, oh, that's a tier two kid, or that's a tier, you know, tier three kid. It's, it's a change in language and a language shift here. This is a very fluid model. You know, it's just, you know, some students might need additional support, some might need intensified support, but with the hope of, you know, developing those skills so that they can fluidly move within the levels and overall getting what they need.
I mean, and sometimes the intensified support, you know, really looks more at perhaps like the family or, you know, some other mental health issues. So it's, it's really the, the whole child, the whole family, all of what we can do to, you know, to help kids get out of that intensive need area.
So we put together a little visual to show this continuous cycle of improvement. So that, we've been using that word a lot more this year because everything is on this continuous improvement, right? We're always working to grow and learn. And so within our MTSS model, we may start with, that top part just says, I'm gonna read it, because it's kind of small maybe for some too. It says crew, or formerly was the leadership team, is focused on this continuous cycle of improvement. And then that might move into looking at student support, or what we call the core group, is focused on supporting the needs of the whole child, school-wide, using the variety of data points from multiple sources. So that's where we can look at all of this data for the whole school, academics, behavior, social, emotional, and mental health as a whole. And then we might need to move into an expanded team. So just as it says, it kind of expands the members of the team to provide everybody in different areas. So it might include the speech and language pathologist, or our occupational therapist, depending on the student need, and bringing those people together to focus on the resources that are needed in monitoring and adjusting as we go. And then, you know, continuing to meet again. And all of these other teams are super important to our whole process. So it's really just trying to make our work more efficient and work really collaboratively too.
The nice thing about this as well is that it allows not only address student needs, but look at the staff that we have in the building and utilize our strengths. Just because I'm a special ed teacher and, and maybe work with a, you know, group of specific students, my experience in teaching reading, for example, with like Orin Gilligan, is different than what Mrs. Hayward, who's a reading specialist, teaches, you know, a specific program that I'm not, you know, quote, not. So we can really pull from the, the different backgrounds and strengths that our teachers have within the building, all staff really, to support students in a creative and more fluid and flexible way. Again, working smarter, not harder, and yeah, making, you know, like I said, meeting the needs of everybody, so.
And the continuous cycle of improvement is something that I think we're all really excited about, because it gives us a chance to, you know, use the data to identify an area that needs work, something that we would like to maybe make some changes or make some work. And then, you know, do some research about what are some of the best tools or resources or people that we can use to make that change, and then analyze that data, how do we do? And then give us a chance to act and reflect on it. Maybe we're seeing that we, from that, we need, we see something else grow, or from that, we can move into something different. So that's a really exciting part, I think, for us, for us all this year. And a continuous component of the cycle is that we use the data to make these decisions. And like Maya Angelou said, we do the best until we know better. When we know better, we do better.
All right, so any question from the board?
Board questions?
So we were doing RTI prior to this, moved to MTSS?
Yes.
Yeah. So now RTI is just under the umbrella of MTSS. We haven't lost it. We've actually, it's so solid here because of all of the work. We've, we've kept it intact because it's a part of MTSS within that academic model.
The RTI really focused on academics. So you had your RTI team, then you had your, you know, BT3 team. You had your school counselor, and it was sort of, let's see, disjointed, but through this model, it's really, it really all comes together, and all, all of these systems work together. So it allows for better collaboration, better teaming, and more streamlined and fluid support for all students.
Others?
I just was wondering if you could clarify what BT3 is?
Behavior tier three.
Okay.
That's what it was called before, so now we've moved it into our student support and.
So that was just strictly for the psychological side of it, like the RTI was the academics? No?
BT3 was just for behavior.
Behavior, just a response.
For behavior.
Okay.
And then you mentioned that with the multi-tiered support system, that you also look at PD opportunities? Could you just explain a little bit more about what you're, what you've experienced, or what you see maybe happening in the future?
Well, one, I actually was just thinking about that, Deb, was, so a good example of that was through the Department of Education. Well, many of us noticed that encoding and spelling and writing was an area that we wanted, we wanted to work on, and we think, we thought needed improvement. So many of us within the volume took a training through the Department of Education called Letters. And through that training, it really kind of launched us into looking at the science of reading and really kind of thinking about, you know, how can we improve kids' encoding? We started doing some assessments at the beginning of the year. We researched some intervention materials like Just Words. We decided to do some implementation of foundations at Level Three, really trying to get, you know, kids to be better spellers, better writers. We reassess them, we change if they're, if they need, you know, if they need more, if they need less, they're moving through these groups. So that's like one example, like through the academics. And then more.
Yeah, we have a consultant also working with us too, who's been really super helpful to have, like, another person helping drive us in the right direction on this MTSS process too, and keeping us moving with fidelity and fluidity too, which has been really great.
So how do you pass that knowledge along to the parents?
Number one is this. I think, number one, it was trying to come here to start sharing our information with the board. And I think that's a great question that we can definitely bring back to the team to see what's our next step to bring it to, to families and to the community more.
The nice thing too is, on this slide, we put part of this team is, you know, does include our PTO, who, you know, they support us tremendously, and our students, students and staff. I know some teachers are part of that, of that team. But the teaming within this MTS model isn't just school-based. We really, it's really community, community-based as well. So we want to try to pull in and, and access, you know, those outside resources as well to support, help support all of our, all of our students.
And I think it's also important to recognize, if a student is being brought up as they're in need of something, the classroom teacher is generally the person that's reaching out to the family already, that there has been a concern. It's not like a, you know, not let them know. It's something that their families and community are part of that process too, in communication with them.
So you also mentioned that the system is more proactive than reactive, and that it's fluid. So I just wondered what your process is. You mentioned kind of just then that teachers are kind of driving that train, it sounds like. But if you're not, I know you're reviewing data three times a year, probably more, but is there some other kind of system or team that's up there that kind of is the go-between between those time periods where kids get picked up?
So we have this core student support team. So when there is a student who, you know, like you said, if we meet, you know, three, four, or five times a year, whatever, but in between those times, you know, there's a concern that a teacher might not, a classroom teacher, or not even a classroom teacher. It could be an integrated arts specialist, it could be the principal, it could be a reading specialist, it could be, any, any adult in the building fills out a student support request form, which goes to this team. We look at it, we meet with the teacher, we, we hear their concerns, and we look at more data, and then we pull in other, other staff as needed. It might be that we need to pull in the occupational therapist, or a speech and language pathologist, to help come up with strategies, interventions, some sort of additional support that that student might need. So it looks very different for each student, because all students need different things. So we, you know, after that happens, we then review and we meet every, I think, six weeks, six to eight weeks. We try to pull back in and meet to see if there's any progress that's been made. Maybe, you know, they don't need as much intensity with the intervention. It may be that, you know, it may turn out that they need to be referred for special education, you know, it, it, but it's a nice way to support the teachers, support the students, and.
Yeah, and, you know, initially, you know, you're looking at, you know, what's happening in the foundation, you know, that's kind of that more proactive piece, you know? What's happening? What can we do? How can we differentiate? What can be done differently? And then it might move into a student needing some more additional support, and that where that team can, it can expand slightly. And then ultimately, you know, our goal is really to limit that intensive need, but, you know, to really be more proactive and keeping kids where they should be in the classroom, you know, more, as much as, and having all of their needs met there and then.
And I think another important piece too is our nurse, Sarah Rodriguez, has been a part of it too, where she might be a part of the expanded team. Maybe there's a medical need that we really weren't aware of, or something that might be preventing them from accessing their education too. So another reason why we include lots of different people in these teams, because they might know something we don't know too, that could help that child succeed.
So does this model work for, like, let's say, not as much kids that are falling behind per se, but what about like the more gifted students? Like, are they submitting tickets and reporting that this, this child is a little bit bored in the classroom, they're?
I'm glad you brought that up.
In theory, yes, yes. No, that's, and that's, that's, I know, we always think about the kids who are struggling, but, you know, students who may be gifted or have, you know, excel can also, you know, fall by the wayside sometimes. You don't worry about them, because they're, they're doing great. But absolutely. And I think, Diana, you mentioned too, it's kind of looking at that universal support model and seeing that how we can make things, how, how can we universally design instructions so that it's differentiated, students are engaged, they're staying in their classrooms, and they're really getting those foundational needs met at that bottom level.
Yeah, and looking at all the different areas and trying to be creative with that, you know? I mean, it, you know, I mean, it would be lovely if we had, you know, a surplus of staff to provide enrichment. But ways that we can be more creative with providing enrichment in different areas. And that's sort of, you know, the best that we can do within this MDS model right now.
Yeah, my, mine was almost the exact same as Sherri's. If you have a student in English or math or whatever, and they're in a combination class of three, four, and they need to be in a five, six for whatever it is, is that student able to access more advanced material than their classmates to keep them pushed? So they're not, to Sherri's point, destructive or bored? So they're not, to Sheri's point, destructive or bored or, I mean. As supportive, you know, from the social side, emotional side, you know. I was a math person, I got bored easy and they eventually just gave me a math book, so.
And those are the, like, not to cut you off, I didn't mean that, but that would be the behavior that we're seeing, right? Is like, oh, he's not engaged or he looks really like disengaged, right? What's going on? Oh, we actually need to challenge him more because this is super boring, right?
Right.
And so that's where that whole piece comes in. It's not just like, oh, he's doing okay in academics, let's just let him slide, right? So I think that's an important piece to continue to look at.
And, you know, our, our math groupings are kind of, we look at the data and we see where kids are and we group them based on their needs. So there's four, five and five, six, for example, different math groups that go on during a math block, same as in, in, in reading. You know, they have kids in, trying to meet their needs where they're at. If they don't, if they're great spellers and they don't need that, they're not getting that. They're getting different kind of enriching activities, so.
That's, and the same thing happens in our K through two, you know, classrooms as well. If you have a kindergartner who is accessing higher level material, they might move in because, you know, into a higher or into a different, you know, group that's more appropriate to meet their needs. Same thing if you have a second grader or a first grader who's struggling, they might access, you know, different, you know, different instruct, not different, but more of what they need at their level. So, and again, kids don't know. They, they, it's very, again, fluid. So, you know, Johnny's going to get this because this is what he needs when, you know, Suzie's going over here to, but everybody's moving in different directions. So it's really not.
I just wanted to know what joint loss is.
Do you have any one ears?
I was really just trying to figure it out.
Last meeting committee.
It's not losing your joints, which I feel like as I'm standing here. Losing my joints.
So it's the, it's the safety committee focused on staff safety?
Staff safety, okay. And then I was just, I know this is your first year, so what is your gonna, how are you going to measure whether you're being successful or not? What is your, what is your measurement of whether this is going to be a successful model or not?
There were, I don't know how to word it, but like the, I don't know the words of it right now, but the Fiat and there's other measurements that Maura gave us at the beginning that we had filled out to see where, what levels we were at right now. Like before we started, we filled that out to say, where do we think we're doing really well? Where do we need some more, you know, training or more time with? And so that's something we would do, I think annually or biannually, to see that progress too, so. The other part will be, we hope to have a school report card. Yes. Maybe by the next board meeting, we're not sure.
So basically you have a baseline.
So, yes.
Where you're gonna.
Looking at student data, you know, looking at office referrals, or, you know, discipline referrals. In theory, these, those should be, you know, dropping. Looking at special education referrals. If we have a really solid foundational, you know, foundation at that universal level, we're meeting the needs of those students, our special ed referrals should be going down.
We've got like discharge of services.
Discharging, discharging students because we're.
It's kind of hard to put a finger on like culture or, you know, behavior and stuff. I mean, you can totally put a finger on academics, right? You look at the data and if it goes up and down, you look at it. But these other things are a little bit harder to measure and these are some of the things that our outside consultant will help us with. The report card is something that, even just the process of creating a report card really helps you be reflective on, how do we know? How do we know people are happy? So it really does help to just, the process itself helps with figuring out how are we going to show it?
Now, do you benchmark different times of the year? So I'm, like, I'm thinking behavior maybe a little bit more out of control, say, the beginning of the school year, you know, kids feeling the boundaries. And then towards the middle to the end of the school year, it, it's gotten better and it's a traditional curve that will happen.
And that's something that the core takes on, like even, we look at like professional development, for example, for staff, and we think, well, at the beginning of the year, because kids are coming in from the summer, maybe we should, you know, do some professional development that's really more geared towards responsive classroom behavior. And then, you know, that may need to be reminded again and halfway through the year. So it's sort of just keeping your finger on it, you know, and really, the process has really helped us to, at least me, to be more efficient with looking at the systems as they're moving around and really as a continuous cycle of improvement.
Okay.
In our school-wide data that we started a couple of years ago with that school success committee, remember that? We had two data points. So we did April 1st and we did October 1st. So, and we've been collecting that. So we started, the first time we did it, just a couple of years ago, we did a 10-year look at. And so we've continued to add that, so we have all of that data. And, and there's a lot of those counts and there's a lot of like behavior referrals. There's kids moving in, moving out, how many kids get into six, eight hours for bags? Like, there's a lot of those small data points that all build up to that big picture.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work. Bringing it right down to staff appreciation week.
Well, you know, it is staff appreciation week, so we have some fantastic staff. We celebrated several milestones last Friday. We had an assembly, so we had, trying to do it from memory, we had a five-year pins that we gave out to Mrs. Robinson and Ms. Addy and then 10-year pin to Ms. Janet. 15-year to Mr. Eckhart, 20 to Mrs. Crockett and 30 to Mrs. Wendy.
30 years. 30 years and 50 performances? Sorry, had to throw that one in there.
We have parents that have stepped up to help out this week, so we have people covering duties for staff, we have some raffle items for staff. We have, you'll see in the lobby, some shout-outs. We've been asking parents to send in just some things that they love about our school and our staff. And time words, gifts, I feel like there's one more thing too. Come on, parent. There's one more. Uh, snacks, we have snacks and they're all book themed because it's the year of the book. So just, we have great staff and we get to celebrate them all week long and it's fantastic. And I, just as a side note to great staff, Holly, who has been here for 20 years, thinks this is her first year that she has given everybody who works here a contract. She's like, that, like, hasn't happened. She's like, ooh, that's a nice little data point too. Everybody who's here is currently coming back.
Perfect. Questions for Heather?
I hate to be like a pain, but I, I was just wondering if you could tell me a little bit more of the, about the houses?
So last year, we started the house system. And the house system, so you would relate it more to the rainbow groups that, when you're here before. So every kid belongs to a house, every staff member belongs to a house. And we chose three, the names are based on New Hampshire mascots. So we did a survey, we did that. This is based off of the Ron Clark Academy, which if you look into Ron Clark Academy, that's what it's based off of. He does a house system down in Georgia and Chrissy has had the chance to go and visit and go to that workshop, which I'm very jealous of. So we started it in a way to engage and connect with kids, but on a more regular basis. Rainbow groups were here, but they didn't have the stamina and they kind of faded. So looking for a way to kind of bring that back in a more sustainable way. So we have kids that are in white birch, purplefinch, granite, and they stay in them the whole time they're here. What we learned between last year and this year is that we should have all the kids in the same family in the same house. We didn't know that last year, so this year.
Should or shouldn't?
Should, should. So moving forward, as new kids come, if they have a family member, we'll make sure that they're in. I think like Ed's family is all in different houses, you know. So it makes it hard because you want them to have common experiences and together. Last year when we started, we just gave each class a house. And so that's how it ended up, like, you know, Mrs. Pudah's class, you are granite, you know. Ms. Sammy is your.
My birch.
My birch, thank you. So that's how we did that first year to make it easy with scheduling. And as we were navigating this year, because everybody split up, we wanted them to stay in the same house. So now every class has a little bit of each of the houses. So it's a little bit more logistical to make it happen, but it's really fantastic. We do activities once a month about-ish. Try to, we've incorporated a all-school recess and then house lunches, so they sit with their house for lunch, but all, everybody on the playground at once for recess. We've done that for a couple of months now and that's been fun. We'll do another one, I think, next week. And we're gonna do our big finale towards the end of the month. If you have specific questions, like there, we just go on. I've got House Mothers, I've got a House Builders committee, I have all these people.
I just wanted to know what it was.
They get, they get shirts, they have a shirt, so everyone wears like their house shirt. So same logos, different colors, so each house is represented by a color. You'll see their houses hanging up in the lobby that they decorate. And I think it's been super positive. Kids like being part of a house, we send postcards to kids. Every kid gets a postcard three times a year from someone in their house, so.
Other questions?
Unless their mailing address is wrong, then it comes back to us. Months later.
All right, moving on to Mrs. Sherwood.
On revenues, there are kind of talking along, I still have the same kind of comment on Medicaid. It's coming in under budget, but not much different than last year. And I really don't expect much to change there. There are a couple of items on the fund balance that aren't reflected in the revenue report. They're under the receivables portion. There is anticipated food service, that's really some money through the end of the year and money from Freedom for the balance of their rented food contract. And then there is anticipated revenue from SEU 13 that is all related to the preschool. So I just haven't gotten those entered in to pay out. The food service from Freedom, typically we wait until the very last manifest of the year. We tally up all of our expenses to make sure I have the right number. Right now it's encumbered for them to pay based on what I think it's going to be. That is in there. The last adequacy payment came in April, so that is paid in full from the state. It's always nice when the promised money comes through.
And that was the adequacy?
That was the adequacy, yeah.
Questions related to revenue? All right, moving on.
As exciting as the principals report.
Moving on to expenditures.
General fund expenditures are still running, you know, less than budgeted due to all kinds of different things. But I believe, I have a comment once we get to the fund balance in total. There's a few expenditures I'm anticipating that are not yet reflected in here.
Okay.
Is there any comments, any specific lines?
I had a few, I think I figured out some. Fuel, oil, I think, I brought that up, but I just, it seems like we've, we've got a big number encumbered and a big balance on top of that.
So the balance will likely stay of that encumbered number. We did spend $3,000, the check was written May 2nd, so it didn't hit this report.
Okay.
I do expect one more, I don't think it's going to be $3,000. I think it'll be closer to $1,500. It was a little cooler this spring than I think it was in the past, but.
And the changeover in the, in the heating system for the gym area. So I think that's why propane was over a little bit, but.
Well, propane was over and I kind of expected another propane bill, but the encumbrance in the fuel should cover both of those for what's left and potentially have some leftover.
Good, so proves that either it was a warmer spring or.
Or winter or.
Or we actually have a much more efficient system.
Effects the pipe up there.
That's right, the clogging the pipe upstairs. Okay, so just, any others? All right. Projected fund balance.
Projected fund balance is, I think, up just a little bit from what I had last one.
Up is always better on this one.
Yeah. That's just things come and go, but before you get too, too excited. Couple of things happened. We did get a quote on finally addressing, so for, just to bring everybody up to speed, New Hampshire's been running a get the lead out for a while. We had to do some testing. So Madison's first round of testing came back with some faucets, some outlets that were higher than New Hampshire's level. They were underneath the federal level for lead testing, but above what New Hampshire allows. So like immediate remediate, remediation was just, don't use them. So then we're all kind of in.
Hand wash only, hand wash only.
Hand wash only. Don't drink from them, don't brush your teeth.
Don't make coffee.
Okay, I got problems now.
We got a water bubbler to fix that, so we're good.
But the state really wants the lead out of the schools, that's their whole push. They have a grant available for it. So Guilford well came in and they're the ones that have typically done our water testing. And they came back with a recommendation to treat the water at the source because the water here is highly corrosive. And they want to put a filter in, I think, where the water comes into the building.
To correct the pH.
To correct the pH, put it between seven and eight and a half. It's somewhere much lower.
I think it's 6.1 or.
So that quote came back at $12,712. That has gone through, we sent it to DES and I've been in touch, we've been in touch with different people, but we've both have been talking to the state. And it, it satisfies what they want, part of what they want, there's a part two to this. They're happy with it, it meets their guidelines, DES is happy with it, that's who I've been talking with. And then the state really wants to get this going. They have a get the lead out grant, there are still funds available. We've started the process to apply. This money will be refunded. But what they want to do is see us start it as quickly as possible to get the lead out of the school. So I guess my first part is I want to waive the bid process, put this through so we get it going. It can be done in one or two days, we don't have to shut the water off, we don't have to close school. We get that done because what we have to do is retest and then wait three months and test one more time and to get those clear. And then part two from the state, this was DES wanted to see this. The state also wants some of the fixtures replaced. Those can also be refunded on the grant. They don't have a price for the fixtures yet.
Okay.
But that's coming.
We're working on that. So there's, because we had not, I think it was 19 of our outlets were deemed above the state limit, we were referred to the public water systems, part of DES. So both get the lead out in, they're both part of DES, but I've had to work with two different organizations within there. And so I thought we would do the Guilford well piece and then test. And so the get the lead out people said, no, you need to do that and do the faucets. So we're trying to do both simultaneously, it's just a matter of getting, Ken is identifying what we need for faucets, which ones to replace, what we can, and get them in and get either him or a plumber to get them installed. So we're actively doing that, it just takes a little time.
And the background on the fixtures is that they said even though, you know, we've done some remodeling and there's some newer pieces in this building, any fixture installed on or before 2014 could very likely have lead in it. They didn't put in the federal guidelines to eliminate lead in the manufacturing process until 2014, so it didn't go into a factor until 2015. So they said we could probably remove some of the lead just by getting the fixture out of there. And they're willing, they have federal money, they're willing to pay for it. It's still there and they are encouraging people to use it and not just treat water.
Like they'll pay for the fixtures and the labor, so if there's some that can't do, and we have a plumber that does, they'll, they'll cover those costs as well.
So this is reimbursement.
So I have a question on the reimbursement side.
Okay.
Does, if, if we waive the, our policy to move forward, does that satisfy policy DAF, the administration of federal grant funds?
I asked them that and they did say yes.
Okay. I just remember we proved that last month, so.
And in other districts in SEU 13, this is not just the Madison issue. It's a, as Heather and Heather have both stated, this is an issue across the state where they've dropped the threshold to five parts per billion. We've done this in Freedom and we have successfully got the money reimbursed. So it's a vetted program and.
What's the maintenance on said water filtration system? Either electrical or whatever filtration, filtrate that runs?
We'll have to find that out, it depends, but there are some, you know, obviously you got to change out filters and.
Resolts or whatever.
We've used, yeah, this is, this will be a different system that we have not used yet in, under our schools. Most of them are at point of dispersal, where it's under the sink unit and those have to be changed. I believe it's twice a year. So this one's going to be a bigger piece where the water comes in.
I mean, is it, is it powered, is it passive?
It's acid neutralizer filter, so it is, and it's powered.
210 volt outlet.
Yeah.
210, 220?
Two, the number two, quantity two, 110 volts.
Two 110s, so.
Two outlets.
Two 40.
I can show you later, Building Your Grounds guy.
That's weird.
That's weird, two outlets, it's usually a telecom thing, two outlets, working in backup. Probably should be on generator, or whoever does it.
Building committee, okay.
It'll be on, it'll be on that side of the building.
It'll be on that spoiler room.
So that will be.
That has a generator.
Utility room.
Yes, because that's where the water comes in. So it's going to be at point of.
Yeah, so if we could just find out, like, we have to have a qualified water person do it or it's.
To change the filters and things like that.
Whatever it is, right, cuz some systems are proprietary and we want, we don't want that cuz they're gonna be.
Tied to, tied to a company.
Or pay them a monthly and yearly invoice.
What it, what it costs per year to maintain, whether it be filter changes.
So what do we need to do?
Waive the policy to approve that bid, or that quote.
Okay, and who is the quote from?
Guilford well.
Guilford well.
So that's who we're currently contracted with anyways currently?
Yes, they do all of our water testing and maintenance.
Okay.
Now, we don't know, you said you didn't know the cost of the new, uh, fixtures?
Right, we're still working cuz we've been looking at a variety of fixtures. We were kind of hoping we might go touchless, but that's not gonna be the case, so. So we're looking, and some of our sinks only have cold, so we're just trying to get the accurate number of what we need for what types. And we're doing all the classrooms, we're not doing the bathrooms, we're doing all the classrooms, nurse's office, nurse's bathroom, staff room. And we need to figure out what we're doing with the outdoor faucet, cuz yes, we do have an outdoor faucet and that needs to be replaced, but that's our unknown right now. Um, so you're actually, spigot doesn't matter because it's not considered an outlet. Don't drink from a hose, kids, is what I was told. Um, but we have fountain over here by the four square, and so that fountain was tested and that was too high.
So do they test every, every outlet in the building?
Yes, so we tested, so the Get the Lead Out sent us sample, um, containers. And so Ken went around and, and they have a specific protocol for testing, has to be stagnant for eight hours. So it's the very first draw, so it's on a flush, which is what Guilfer does, so it's on a flush. So they go around, so Ken went around and collected all of the samples, we shipped it out to the Get the Lead Out program, they tested it, sent us our results. So you have every outlet that you could drink out of. So yes, bathroom sinks, but no, not out of the outside spigots, just the water fountain that's outside. I did ask the question, cuz I wanna make sure I was doing everything they wanted, and he said no, they, that didn't qualify.
All right, so you need a motion to waive the bidding policy?
I will motion.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed.
We need the, I don't know what alphabet, so it goes on that one.
DA?
No, it's not.
DA is the federal one, what's the, what's the policy?
Bidding.
The bidding policy for the three bids, over ten thousand.
Oh, yes. Is it B V H? I don't know, I have a A open, I have policies open.
It is.
It's a, and it's a huge alphabet soup that doesn't make sense sometimes.
B V H is what it comes in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Sherwood.
Getting retired, DJE.
What is it? DJE.
G J E.
Board policy. Management policy.
So the motion by Jeremy, second by Ed, is to waive policy DJE, which is the bidding policy, which is anything over ten thousand dollars has to go up for bid. So I have a motion, a second, any other discussion related to that? Thoughts or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining, carries. Now do you need a motion to approve said contractor? So to approve Guilford well to install the.
Water filtration system.
Thank you, water filtration system. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed, any other discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining, carries. Thank you. All right.
And on other water-related items. Paul Fournier was in doing some service. I, was it a rifle break, I'm proud of you? He discovered the water heater has a small leak. Cleaned it up, but it's like right through the tank leaking onto the floor. So while it's not huge now, it does need to get fixed. And hopefully if we treat the water and reduce the corrosivity, this water heater, new one, will last longer cuz the one that has the hole in it, um, according to Ken, he went and checked on some records, he figures is a little over twelve years old. Not brand new, but.
Still not terrible, but no.
Not new, but not old in the same respect.
So this, we have an estimate from Paul Fournier for seventy-four ninety-five. It's under the board policy for approval or bidding, but it's kind of an FYI that we want to go ahead and spend money to repair this before the hole in the tank gets any larger.
So that would just over expend the building, the equipment line, building repairs? Thoughts? I mean, I think it needs to get done one way or another. And I think sticking with the company that we're using for everything currently is.
Is my preference.
And those things usually don't give you a warning.
And he answers my mental.
Right, that's a small warning sign, a little trickle before it goes boom. So would you like the board's blessing?
Uh, yes, I'd take the board's blessing.
Take the motion to approve. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed. Paul Fournier to replace the water heater?
What was it costing?
Seventy-four ninety-five.
Any other thoughts, concerns, or discussion?
If we could possibly wait till the water filtration system's done, that would be great, but also timing wise.
Yeah, right, get fresh water running through it from the start.
I also don't know how long it'll take for him to order that, if it's something that's in stock.
Right, how, how big is that? Probably a giant hot water tank for a school.
The saying's.
Residential forty gallon.
Right, no.
I just don't know.
Um, oh, it's sixty-eight gallon tank.
Sixty-eight.
Seventy-four ninety-five or sixty? That sounds expensive.
It takes oil off the main tank, it's an oil-fired wa- hot water heater.
Maybe the building's in grounds committee can go look at that and get after this. That sounds like a lot.
Like a big tank or expensive?
Lot of money. I know it's commercial, but that's. Sixty-eight gallon. Your Davert Home wants forty to sixty gallons. Mine's thirty-five.
I'm just trying to picture mine.
Replacing a Bak oil-fired hot water heater with new Bak tank, Bak or Bosch? And the existing oil burners fine, that's going to be reused to reduce the cost.
So do we wanna move forward or hold back?
Do we need to approve it as a board?
You don't need to approve it.
It's under the threshold.
No, then we'll leave it to the Building and Grounds Committee.
Okay.
Is that okay with the rest of the board?
So you're reneging your vote, so you wanna scrap that?
Withdrawing the motion.
Replacing, in theory, is a good idea, you want more?
Yeah, just to go look at and get some better understanding of what we're doing.
Yep.
I think it's a bad idea, it just seems like a lot of money for. I'm a visual guy. What needs to be done?
What needs to be taken care of, okay? Obviously, hot water heaters aren't my thing, so. And then default budget, we just added on there to basically have the administration go back and come back to us next month with their adjustments to make the default. I mean, I think that's, that's the easiest way than trying to hash it all out. Superintendent, how do you, you not get a bunch of little lines?
I don't know, I.
He wasn't at the planning.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, yeah, I know.
All right.
I gotta hit my head more often, I think. So I do have a couple things, though. I, I do wanna say I got a chance to see the play, Peter Pan, it was outstanding. So Tammy did an excellent job with her crew, as always, it was excellent. And actually, one of the moments that stood out for me was when there was a little technical difficulties and the kids just kept on going, I would've been in tears and run off the stage, you know, screaming. So I, my hat's off to them, they were trained very well under pressure. So that was, that was really excellent to see, when things don't work out your way, how do you respond to it? So that was, that was really impressive. We do have an SAU thirteen and nine meeting. I don't think that made the calendar, but that's on the sixteenth, it's on a Wednesday, and that will be right here in Madison at six o'clock.
April sixteenth?
That is going to be May, June sixteenth.
June sixteenth, yeah.
No, that's on a Wednesday.
It will be on a Wednesday.
June sixteenth is not a Wednesday.
June sixteenth is a Monday.
That's the eighteenth.
May.
June eighteenth is a Wednesday.
That's the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
Which room will you use?
Final answer?
Final answer, eighteenth.
Which room will you use?
Which room would you like to use?
Jim.
There we have it.
Cuz it could be.
There could be two, there could be two hundred.
Correct.
This one's the joint, four.
Nine thirteen.
Okay.
Uh, and let's see, we're, uh, we're, we're working on closing out the year strong. We're doing a really good job, uh, everyone's keeping the morale high, uh, working on assessments. We saw a great presentation from the, from our educators, contracts have gone out to staff, um, as Heather pointed out earlier, so that's great. Hopefully we'll have everyone back on board for another great year. We're already starting planning PD. As we know, the school calendar's been approved and we'll approve the, uh, board meeting calendar. I think, I think that's coming up right up, uh, right after this. So, yeah, finish the year strong and we're already starting planning for next year. So, um, you know, a successful school year starts in the spring, we'll be ready to roll and, uh, finish the year strong.
Question, uh, just after that MTSS, does the preschool utilize any of that as part of what they do? Where it's under the SAU, but.
Not currently.
They're not really, they, they see more of a, uh, intervention model where, um, uh, they may get some push-in from some of our specialists, um, but not necessarily, they're not necessarily going through that whole protocol. Uh, especially with preschool, there's limited assessments, there are more assessments in the classroom. Uh, there is a POMS assessment that we utilize, but it's really individualized for, for preschool.
We, we did use the process that we have a place for students for, for one or two of the students in the EC that were having behavior issues. And so we were able to use some of our core people to help, um, give ideas and, you know, some strategies, protocols, kind of things in place, but we haven't really integrated things to.
Right, yeah, no, I just didn't know how that.
It's a different group of students.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Would you use any of like the DIBELS information that came in for kindergartners early in the fall? I'm assuming there's some of the assessments from the DIBELS that is done in the fall for kindergarten?
For Kinder?
As a way to kinda.
I would lean, I would.
I'm not sure what your question, like, in regards to like assessing preschool?
Yeah, like you, you've mentioned before, Ed, like kinda wanna assess programs and see, you know, how they're working.
I see where you're going with this now, yes. I think that's a great suggestion, cuz this is really the first year. Um, so we haven't had a chance to see our, you know, our quote-unquote graduating preschool class out yet. So I think that's a great suggestion, I'm gonna write that down. I, I think that's.
Also be good to know like what kind of programs and stuff should be used and what the expectations are, cuz I don't know if there are, like, we have competencies that children should reach, I'm not sure what. I, I don't know much about that age level, um, if there are competencies for early childhood education, if there are. I mean, I, you mentioned POMS, but I think that's changed to something that you're calling DRDP or something.
Yeah, they change them all the time.
They did change it, so, so I've been trying to learn more about if it's a competency type system and what that is.
Well, I, I think, I, I apologize, I didn't understand, um, your comment to begin with, uh, that, but now seeing where you're going with that, I think that's a great suggestion, let's get that benchmarked.
I just don't know if DIBELS was something that all three schools did where, cuz this is a, now gonna be an SAU program.
Right.
So obviously we wouldn't be driving necessarily.
Right, and they're gonna be done in different locations, but yes, that would be a common, a common assessment.
Assessments that are done in the preschool before they would be as well, that would give you that data.
Yeah, and I would think too, like, maybe some of the kindergarten screening information that you do.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great suggestion, I'll talk with Lisa about that and we'll make that happen.
Other thoughts? Building and grounds.
It's all you, Ed. Take it away.
So it was the first to speak wins?
Yeah, sure, so we did have a meeting, it was actually very informative, very good. So we decided on gym floor color. Basically, uh, it's like a sand color, I think for lack of a better term, like a red.
Beige.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think it was sand beige, actually.
You were both right. With like a red, a red border on the outside, so it isn't so just in-your-face red all the time. And the Mustang logo will be in the middle of it. There will not be anchors for volleyball, it'll just be a basketball court.
So, oh, so the posts that are in there now?
Right, those are, those will be coming out, so those anchors, trip hazards will, will be removed. We're just getting the lines put down for basketball. Talked about a bunch of other things, actually, throughout a bunch of ideas. Everything from painting the wall colors to everything.
Generator.
Oh, yeah, we also talked about a generator for this side of the building. We looked at a couple of quotes, but they were very, they were very different in terms of size, three-phase versus single-phase, so we, um, need to get new refresh quotes, those are about at least a year old, a couple of them are a few years old.
Right back from when we were looking, using the grant for.
Right, so we looked at that one, that's probably highest priority for us, is to make sure that this side of the building, which has all your phones and other things, has power in the event of an outage, um, where this is the shelter for the town, it's definitely important. We mulled over a few other projects, but we're really trying to nail down what exactly the next biggest project is. Crazy things from, hey, should we put a stage in the gym? Should we build a garage to remove the shed factory we have out back? To a sugar house, to, to everything, so it's definitely evolving, so if anybody has any, you know.
I just have a question.
Sure.
You were talking about painting the gym and, um, I'm not sure if anything was decided on yet, but I'm curious if you'd involved the rec a little bit in designing the gym? Because, you know, we have, we have a lot of events here in sports and I really would like to see that highlighted.
Yeah, we haven't, we decided on absolutely nothing, we talked about a lot, cuz things came up like, if we painted the back wall for presentations, and then I said, well, why don't we just build a stage again? This is just chucking ideas out there to, um, putting up the banners Heather mentioned, putting them back up now that the, all the metal's gone, that whole wall on that side is pretty much completely bare. So, yeah, we're, I mean, we're open to talking about anything, really. I mean, it's a community's building, so.
Right.
But those are your point, people.
So if you have any questions or suggestions?
My priority was a stage, I want to push that wall up.
Which wall?
Put a stage, the one in the back to the, to the playground, yeah.
The one that abuts the thing, but that's it, again, pie in the sky type of.
That's just.
And bleachers would be nice.
After the generator.
It's just trying to figure out what the priorities are and.
Best bang for the buck.
Right. The generator is a small-cost thing that really should be done, it's infrastructure, the rest of it is nice to have or worked in the thing as, you know. We were gonna talk to Sean Bergeron and say hypothetically, if we wanna put a stage up, is that a million-dollar project? A five-million-dollar proj- I don't, I don't even know what something like that would cost. Does it have to be ADA compliant? And if it does, what does that mean for a RAM or a potentially a small lift?
A trip lift.
Things like that.
If we had generator information, generator information before the next meeting, would you want to consider using your fund balance for that, is it that much of a priority?
I will say there's enough money in the CIP to cover the generator, the way the warrant articles were adjusted, it deliberative.
There is not, or there is?
There is, the generator was already in the plan, it just wasn't framed up cuz we were looking at grants in the fall and some other questions about whether it was needed, back and forth. But it's sitting on CIP, it's there.
Okay.
I would can do it.
And this isn't just me from a personal standpoint, I'd rather take it out of the CIP as it was intended for and turn the taxpayer dollars back than take it out of the fund balance, personally.
And then we would vote on that.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, um, perfect, anything else? Any questions for that?
That's all I got, thanks.
Gym floor bids?
We have some gym floor bids. Take this down. As you get these, we have two that came back, I talked to several more. One bowed out gracefully, one not as gracefully, um, they were too far away. But one just didn't deal in the kind of floor we wanted, they didn't do a seamless installation. Um, they did highly recommend an installer and as it turns out, that is installer is the one that Bowin works with.
The one that bowed out?
No, the highly recommended installer.
Got it.
Came through on a facilities thread that I'm on, um, across the state. But this, there was, if we had gone with a different type of product, if we wanted to do a sheet vinyl or some, you know, something that wasn't seamless, they would've bid. Since we're not, they're saying that Danaher Flooring is the one to use for a board rubber flooring.
Okay.
Um, that is who Bowin has worked with to get their prices from. There is a big difference in the prices. There is a big difference in the prices, these bids are not equal.
No.
Yes. The RFP was very clear that we wanted to hire someone.
He speaks about the three minutes that he was in our building.
They didn't make, they didn't make the scheduled walkthrough, he said it took a while to get to his desk. They had the full RFP, we did ask that, we wanted a general, someone to run the project. So when I got this proposal, um, I emailed them and I said, listen, you know, we're looking for somebody to do it all. I mean, this is just the floor, the eighty thousand six hundred. Like we need someone to demo, pull up the vinyl tile that's there. And somebody that will act as GC if anything else comes up, um, they need to do something to remove the adhesive that's there once the VCT is up. Um, Bowin has that quoted as, um, shot blasting or sand blasting the slab. Bowin will cover the moisture meter, reading the testing of the slab, if it goes down to make sure it's within limits. If it's not, then they will mitigate that. Um, New England sports floors indicated that they could do all that, but they did not get back to me with a price and they knew tonight was the deadline.
What about timeline?
Bowin can do this summer.
They can do that this summer, Danaher had a cancellation in their schedule. So somebody must have lined it up and neither didn't get the funding or something else to priority.
Is there a chance, just knowing that all home week is early August, that we could potentially get this done, you decide at that?
I think it's a matter of as soon as, if you approve that, I'll communicate to him tonight and then as soon as we hear back from him, what the schedule is. But it's, I think, gonna be probably a four-week total window of time, because it's two to three weeks for installation, then it has to sit to cure for a week with nothing on it.
So for lucky three weeks, it will go down without hitch, there's no concerns on the slab.
You know, they're very needed, so it's, yeah. Um, you will see that there's the option of the baseboard, we hadn't really thought that through until Andre was walking with us, um, to remove and just replace with new, um, that cove, rubber cove base. We haven't really thought about that.
So would it, it would be part of the flooring at that point? So, or would be?
The edging around the sides.
Right, okay, so it doesn't?
Like a face.
Yeah.
It's glued to the wall.
Yeah, okay.
We currently have it there, I mean, they could potentially rip it off and maybe replace it, but then it's a little bit stretched out and if, if you're gonna do it, you should just, for three thousand dollars, you should just do it right, but. So just so you know, that's the, that's one of those options to add to.
Doesn't include our Madison Mustang emblem?
Because you all talked about that after we did the proposal.
Right.
So it's something we can.
Oh, but buildings and ground wanted a Madison Mustang.
Yeah, we need a Mustang on our floor.
Yeah.
What's that?
We want the Madison Mustang on our floor.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think it's, 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 it's our community, I mean, it's, rec would probably agree.
Yeah. I do have two questions, um, will there be the pickleball lines or no?
We did not opt to put them down.
Okay, um, and then my other question is, are these guys aware of the weight of the stage that will be on that and how long it will sit there for? And there, there's no concern about?
So this is the same company that did the, um, units in there this past summer. And so while we're in there, we had the conversation about, hey, this floor, and they said, well, do your kids a favor, do a wood floor. I said, but we have, blah, 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 and like, oh yeah, you want the rubber floor. So they are, and then when Andre came, we talked about it yet again, cause the stage was up at the time, so we were able to say, see, this is what we're talking about. In addition to the lunch tables that are on it back and forth every day. So we talked about all the different things that it really is a multi-purpose room for.
Okay.
And yes, this is the, the one that they recommend.
Okay.
And I know this is probably in the CIP, is this, is this a ten-year floor, fifteen-year, what would it be?
Five-year manufacturer's warranty.
Well, I know, but I, I didn't know what this was built into the CIP, I was, I can't remember.
I thought it was twenty.
I think I did it as twenty or more. My copy, I'm not gonna be able to read without the.
Yeah, no, I just.
I'm sorry, it's the stuff. Okay, thank you.
Two, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty eight.
I put it in fifteen.
Ten?
What? I think it was twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, epoxy bathroom floor is down, I'm, sorry.
Do we know what the optional extended warranty program would cost? Did we get any tip or quote on that?
I don't have any information on the extended warranty.
Fifteen years, sorry.
So.
How is it clean?
Um, it is spot mop, dry with a dry mop, um, washed typically once a week with an auto scrubber, um, which we're hoping to buy a new one. But it does have special chemicals that you have to use with it, so there are specific chemicals to purchase, um, but it's very easy to maintain.
And those chemicals meet the school standard of what chemicals can be used and cannot?
Yeah. Yep, I've given Ken all the information to this over, so yes, he has reviewed all of that information.
So the history of completed projects that are listed on here, are these specific two floors like this or no?
This is just, this is just basically like a reference letter for Bowin.
Okay.
These are all the, I mean, he did this building.
Well, I was gonna say, we've, we've used it as well.
He did this half as well as those EC units.
Right.
Yes, so, no, it's just, I think we'll have a reference.
Okay. All right. Thoughts?
I think it's exciting.
I would like to do the baseboard, I'm like a complete toss-up of whether to paint the back wall black.
Oh, I, I don't think you need to decide on that right now either.
Well, we, don't we have to decide on the quote?
Well, you can, but then later on, if you wanna spend thirty-four hundred, you could spend thirty-four hundred later.
Before they start it.
Before they start it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, absolutely.
So painting the back wall black, is that more for performance purposes?
That would be a request that we had from drama mostly, um, so that behind the stage, you wouldn't have to have that additional black fabric that never is quite enough. So that way when we have performances or anything else in the stage set up there, then you just have this beautiful black drop. And I think it, maybe somebody visited a theater somewhere and it was like that, is that true? Is that, I think that's where the idea came from and I don't remember if it was Katie or Holly or.
No, I was talking about going to Effingham School and that they had a little divot in their back where they put their stage and they had that all painted black. So I don't know if someone else, I said something.
So it's like a black room behind it that blocked everything out.
So, yeah.
So like, so we're looking at the techum, so that was, the, the question was that back wall, um, just the techum, so from the wood board up. Cause no matter how high you try to hang that fabric, I could still, when I was doing the recording, could still see. It just, just in an effort to try to make things look nicer and.
So it wouldn't be the whole wall, it would just be?
Just that one back wall.
But it would be the whole back wall?
Florida ceiling?
No, the, the board, so that, the particle board.
Oh, okay.
The techum, the soundboard.
I was gonna say, I feel like kids' hands and like all over a black, like might.
It's like a four by eight sheets or, or something.
Yeah.
So top floor.
Forty, I think it's forty feet.
So two, two techum boards. Okay.
But it does require some lifts to get from right top to bottom there.
And they'd wanna do that first, I'm assuming, before they put in a nice new floor and then have.
We would like them to do it first before.
Had somebody like me to paint it, the floor would all be black by the time they started.
Right.
All right, so thoughts?
I gotta say, I have, I had some reservations about New England sports floor. Danaher Flooring, who is, Bowin is the general, Danaher will actually install the floor and, and for the epoxy on it. Comes highly recommended.
I just wouldn't accept this as a bid. As a, someone who works for a private company, I would just be like, no thanks.
Yeah.
It's, it's half a page basically saying, you're gonna do everything, I'm gonna come in and put a floor down. And you're liable for, no, right. So, I mean, can I make a motion to accept this?
For the difference?
Yes. Personally?
Yeah.
With the, with the addendum that we can talk about the options at a later date, but at least get it on their schedule?
Yeah, but can you, can you at least do the, add the optional cove base, the rubber at the baseboard? I feel like that's, that's something that I think that we just overlooked when we were doing the RFP, that we really should be including.
Because they're gonna rip it out?
It's gonna ha, it's gonna be ripped off anyways, and so then it's gonna be stretched and then it's a gray color, so it's not gonna match your color that you have on your floors, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the bid or accept the bid with the addendum of the six-inch new rubber cove base.
Second, okay, discussion?
I'm sorry, I just, yeah, I just wanted to ask another question, sorry.
I have one as well.
But did you, do you happen to know how much it, more it would have cost to put in the pickleball lines?
Nope.
It's just such a big up and coming and we've been asked quite a bit about it and that would be less that we'd be throwing on the floor to create those lines? But I'm just curious, I mean, it's not the end of the world, I don't wanna hold up anything for pickleball lines.
I think we can ask?
We can ask, I mean, I can ask, we were gonna ask about a logo.
Right, that's, that was, that was my question, is what about the logo, right?
Yeah, I would love to see that on there.
And then have, kind of reserve some decisions on the option, like painting the rear wall, find out what it costs for a logo, find out about pickleball lines, um.
Okay, so how about this, can I make a conditional approval?
Yes.
To tentatively award them the contract or to authorize them with the, you know, caveat that we're waiting on a couple of addendums, the potential to cost of the pickleball lines.
Well, I think you should approve what's there and know that you may.
And do them as adders?
Then do them as, as additions and if.
Because you don't wanna delay communicating with him that he's got it, he's not gonna order stuff and schedule it in one line of tentative.
If.
He wants to know if he's got it or not.
I think the question would be is if the board would be okay, maybe meeting in the middle if we need to have an answer before our next meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's the cleanest way, rather than trying to do email and, and that's, that's always a mess.
Well, sorry, another question, could be because of like what the, what was the total, what did it come to without adding any of these other?
One twenty-five, five oh six.
Okay, so that's, that's basically our budget right there, right?
Yes. So that, we're currently with the six-inch rubber cove base, we're at one twenty-eight, five sixty-nine.
So that's why when we like initially met, I want, we were looking to save cost by getting rid of the, um, volleyball net.
Yeah.
Tie-downs. And, uh, I know the pickleball was mentioned, but, um, we decided to try to keep costs down and not do the pickleball.
That makes sense, yep.
And then, but we, we pretty much wanted that Madison emblem.
Yep.
Mustang, and so that's kinda like, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, that, that makes sense. You guys just hit the max and obviously we don't, I, I mean, I'd love to see the emblem go on.
No, go ahead.
Um, so if they pull the baseboard and they damage the walls at all while they're doing that, are they responsible for?
If they damage the walls, yes.
Yeah, like pull some of the drywall or.
Yeah.
So they would be responsible.
And they have a capacity to repair it, which is really nice.
Um, and then I just have a comment, um, I, I think this is, I mean, looking at the bid and knowing we're over what was appropriated by passing the warrant article and knowing how the warrant article was came about. I think this is the kind of problem that you get into when that is the process by which.
When you put the cart before the horse.
Yep, so, um, I'm just disappointed that we're here trying to figure out how we can do this floor and weren't, we might be skimping in areas where if there had been better planning, we would have everything that we wanted with the floor. So I just wanted to make that comment, that it's frustrating coming on a project that is really important like this.
It's not a small one-classroom floor project.
And it's not something we would do again for a while, so we're gonna have to live with what we get. And knowing that we might not get everything that we wanted because there wasn't proper planning when the amount was presented, so.
What did we want?
I will say it was on the schedule, not for twenty-six, but twenty-seven.
Right.
Right, but we would have had time to look at.
Amped up by.
I think what Deb's referring to is doing the logo on the floor, making sure we had them all the money in the.
We would have our ducks in a row and we wouldn't be.
Right.
Trying to figure out how we get an emblem in the middle, we would already have planned for that and have an idea of what the amount would be that we needed for a warrant article.
So we'd know what the total cost of the project was before we asked for money.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So.
Ed, did you, did you best negotiating?
Did I do my best negotiating?
Were you the one negotiating this?
There's no nego, this was just a request from.
No, this was an RFP.
Yeah, I didn't.
So they just, they just.
Can you negotiate?
We can do this, if you wanna come over, we'll strip some tiles.
We can't say for a fact, just say I think more.
I could do that, I don't want a logo on this, it's gonna go up like a hundred thousand.
Right. Yeah, this generally, that's the problem with when you put it out to bid, you, you get, there's no negotiating at that point.
And this is kind of a, it's not like building a school, this is kind of a one-off.
Right.
It's pretty specialized, I'm saying.
And we might be able to negotiate on a logo into it, you know, you've already got the paint and the color.
Out of everybody that bid it, you get it if you put the logo down.
If you put the logo, great, now that they just watch it on TV. All right, uh, so I have a motion by Ed, second by Jeremy, to accept the bid with the six-inch baseboard, so the total of one twenty-eight, five sixty-nine. And then we will either meet again before June to decide on the pickleball lines and/or the logo. If it needs to be done before June, if not, we'll meet, do it at our June meeting.
That makes sense.
That makes sense? Any other discussion? Comments? Seeing none. Oh, yes.
So the, the money that's going in from the warrant article for the building capital reserve, right, that's not reflected on the current page showing.
On the capital reserve, but no, it's not in there, that won't go in until July, August.
Right, cause usually it doesn't even get in till December, right?
Right.
Um, so for appropriations from the town are due by December eighth, ninth.
Okay.
I can do the fund balance as soon as I'm comfortable, I prefer to wait for the audit, auditor, at least until after the DOE twenty-five is filed.
Okay, but realistically, we could, wouldn't even put it into the capital reserve account, because we draw it from.
We have to pay it.
Right.
Then I send everything to the trustees and ask them to reimburse it.
Okay, so we have to put the money in the capital reserve and then take it out again?
Getting, when we do stuff in the summer, to get this paid and have enough money and all of that stuff.
Right, because the summer is when we're short on cash.
Well, it's when we're loading up and for September for Star School.
Okay.
So questions I have is what would be the cost to include a logo in the center? What would be the cost to extend the warranty? I think I heard that too.
And what would that, what would that include?
Yes.
And what lines, what lines are included in the code, basketball only or is this open to add pickleball?
Or, or cost to add pickleball to the basketball. Potentially.
Yes.
Volleyballs on the floor now, right, with them?
No, it's just. It's just basketball.
It's just basketball.
And just the anchors for volleyball?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I don't know what lines volleyball would require.
I don't either.
They use what's there for the volleyball.
The basketball lines?
Right.
Okay.
Cause that's where those anchors are.
In the center.
Yeah, yeah, middle ones.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. All right, uh, moving on up. Board meeting calendar and review?
Should be on page thirty-seven.
Yeah, if I could find page thirty-seven in this mess I've made.
You want this one?
No. Okay, now I have it. Any discussion regarding to the school board meeting calendar? Take a motion to approve. Motion by Deb, second by Jeremy, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I got a question.
Oh, question, yeah.
Oh no, it's the third Thursday, never mind, I thought you had a meeting on Thanksgiving.
Oh.
I was like, wow, that's gonna be terrible.
I just wanna point out deliberative will be super early in February.
So we're looking at.
The second.
February second, wow, okay.
Just be ready.
Yep, to fall within the timeline, that's gonna, that's gonna come.
Yeah, right.
Which means January is.
The fifth.
Right, so January's gonna be early as well.
Yeah.
So. Budget season's gonna get short, fast. Okay. Done.
Great, thank you.
I, we just- I didn't, okay. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? None. I'd started to and then Ed said I have a question in the middle of it, so we stopped. That's okay. Madison Corner Schoolhouse. All right, so some questions came up at the last meeting. Have all that written somewhere here, right there. So I've had them include the policies of building use. So we've been with the assumption that, or the assumption has been that you can't use the building while kids are in the school. Reading through all of the policies, it doesn't really say that. So I think the policy committee needs to look at this and give us an interpretation or let us know because they're trying to write grants and find uses for the building that may be during school time. You know, knitting club or mother's coffee hour or something. But they need to know what the use timing would be for the building. So it's, it's really getting the board to give it a definitive answer as to can they? Based on what I've seen and reading it, it, it looks like it would just need to be signed out the same way anything else would be signed out. But that could also include during school hours. Which traditionally in the building here, nothing gets signed out during school hours, but it's not inside the confines of the walls of the building.
But it's on school property.
But it's on school property. So I think some clarification to the policies would be nice to have so that we can say, yes, this is what it can be used. This is what it can be used during the day, during school hours when, you know, kids are present in the building. It's an interpretation I wasn't willing to, to go out and give on my own. So.
My only hangup I could possibly see is if somebody comes in here as a volunteer, granted they're here. They, don't they have some sort of background check or can they just show up?
Depends on the classification of what they're volunteer, what they're volunteering. If they're a designated volunteer, where they would be working alone with students, they need a background check. If they're going to be under the supervision of a teacher and it's a less frequent volunteer responsibility, it's like Read Across America Week, you're going into a classroom to read, you're gonna be in the supervision of a teacher. You're reading the book, you're leaving, you wouldn't need a background check for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it does. So many questions, just because we had an incident where I worked today where there's an unknown person, person on the property and it caused all kinds of problems with dismissal and, and things of that nature. So I would just be worried that offering that up during the school hours could cause some of those issues.
I personally don't like the idea.
Yeah.
I just be personal.
Which makes me think like voting, right? Like, so we have voting that's here, we lock the doors, but then we're very limited and there's some depending on what the voting is. Maybe we don't use the playground because you don't know who's gonna lock their door onto the playground or anything.
I wonder if there's a way we could help them though, like I, I agree. I mean, even the parking situation doesn't really, you know-
Lend itself.
Yeah, but I wonder if there is a way that we could help them with those grants by coming up with some use of the building from the school perspective, like-
So during, how the, how the school would be using?
Yeah.
Plan to use the building?
Yeah.
Well, I think you could still offer the, like the knitting club or whatever. I understand that a lot of those people meet maybe during the day of the week, but they could still do those things. It would just need to be outside of school hours if they wanted to use it.
So I think we need to, I think we just need to clarify in, in our policies so that it's kind of anchored in there to make sure that they're not saying, well, you just don't want us there, so.
And can I just mention just to remember that it's like a school campus? So it's not just we have kids in the building, but when there are kids in the building, that means they're on the playground, they're on the EC playground, they may be walking around the building.
Well, I know when we've had water out there.
Right, right. So I mean, there's just all of this, so it really is a campus. It's not about, oh, the kids are in here, so it doesn't matter. No, it's very likely they could interact with anybody in the parking lot.
That's why I thought, I thought the policy had said school property, but I guess it states-
Well, and I was just wondering if you have like a sign for the playgrounds or the, the playgrounds are a community playground, but they're not accessible.
It says not available during school.
During school hours.
So I would think it would be the same kind of-
Yeah, it's such a safety, security-
Right.
Issue at this day and age.
When is our next policy meeting?
I've been waiting for a while. I was gonna see if we could wait till fall, but-
Not anymore.
Maybe not. So maybe if you could bring back some suggestions to us.
Angus should move across the street. My second. How's that?
The schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a big piece of property over there.
It's a small piece of property, but it'll fit.
There you go, problem solved.
Okay. Just bringing what I was-
It's the messenger.
I'm trying to help this policy.
But that idea is also on the radar.
That idea has not been off the radar. I have, I have spoken to the owner of the property across the street.
I'm just thinking as a town, that gives you-
And Leanne has been looking into that as well as a Realtor who's on that committee.
That gives you full access to the building.
Anytime.
It doesn't interfere with your school.
Yep.
Could actually give you parking to utilize that building.
And it keeps the heritage alive.
Okay.
But we will take the policies under advisement under my committee.
Thank you. So the next was the mold in the basement of said building. So it was asked of me if the school board would, would take on the responsibility of remediating the mold from the basement there. But I think, so the more I've thought about it is that's, I mean, as a school district, we're part of the town's budget. The town's approved fifty thousand dollars so far into the building. I mean, I think that money would be to make the building clean, sound and, I mean, that's, again, my perspective, but I don't want to-
But what about like the lead issue too?
Right, the lead issue is, is they're working on. The mold is from that last big storm that we had two years ago that flooded the whole basement because the pump stopped working. But it's just getting it cleaned up and, and cleaned out. But I think it's all part of the total overall project for that.
Fifty grand is gonna be gone to that.
It is, and that's why there, there's a lot of grants being, being worked on right now. I know L-Chip is one that they've been talking about. So there are some others out there that they're working on getting. So it's just another thing that was brought forward.
So to do that, because it's in a capital reserve, right? Do we need to authorize spending of that money? I would rather not spend it out of our working budget.
Right, I, I think it should come out of the capital reserve for the, the Madison Corner Schoolhouse. Yeah, which leads me to the next question. But this one's more of procedural because the board has policies related to bidding and spending. But this committee's kind of working alongside and I sit on both. How do we want them to award bids? So if a bid comes in, if they put out an RFP to do the siding in the building, technically the money's coming through the board. Do we want the committee to review the bids and make a recommendation to the board? To approve or do, do you want the bids to come to the board? To be opened, read and my thought was to have the committee-
Thinking of committee.
Open the bids and say, this is who we recommend. And then we bring it to the board, the board can approve the bid.
Yeah.
I would like that and also to bring all the bids and just say, here's the three bids for-
This is what we recommend.
We recommend bid A because of this.
Yeah, and knowing that committee, I have a lot of confidence in them and making sound choices.
I agree. Then the other question was septic, is there a septic on? And I was told that, yes, there is a septic for that building that is separate from the rest of the school.
Really?
I did not know that.
Where is it?
It's under the basement.
That's why we got mold.
That's why it has mold management?
I was just thinking the same thing.
No clue, but I was told there was a septic over there. I will add, talk with Ken and find out.
You should find out where said septic is, because physically, I can't believe- There's a space big enough. If it's not a, somehow some sort of accessible somewhere.
Unless it's under the parking lot.
And-
I think it's under the basement.
In the basement?
No, outside.
There's, it's a propane, there's a propane tank in the ground out back. So looking at the building from the driveway just to the left, that, that's a propane field. So there's a buried propane tank there.
Pipe with a cap with the-
Right, it should be a, you know, about a three foot.
A privy?
Sure, is that what you, is that what you call it? You're the building and grounds guy, dummy. Heather, can you ask Ken, just-
Yes, I just emailed him.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Shocked if there's a fully approved DES leach field out there somewhere. Shocked.
Don't, don't, yes.
The building is over a hundred years old, the septic system's four metal barrels.
Okay, so it's a fifty-five gallon drum.
But at least if we know if we paved over recently, so if we have a hole in the driveway.
What's that? No, I'm-
How long has it been there?
The eight, ace?
No, it was, it was up on it.
Right, so move it.
Didn't it happen in the nineties?
I wasn't here in the nineties, I don't know.
I was, I was in town with the school.
Okay, all right, so I don't lose it for you here.
I can text you.
If it was, it would've been early nineties.
Because I didn't have this part, so it wouldn't have been hooked in with, I mean-
Right.
And there's a bathroom in there.
Right, and the, but again, I don't know the last time it's been pumped. You know, or, well, it, right, the water's been shut off for years, so, but I don't know the last time it's been pumped.
Like twenty-ten-ish it was used and those bathrooms were functioning.
Yep. So, we'll get some more information on that, but that, we will move on. That's what I had for Madison Corner Schoolhouse. Updates, Tammy, did I miss anything? Are you sure? Feel free to throw it right at me. All right, if you do, let me know. The lead mediation we talked about in there as well. So allow the superintendent to authorize the superintendent to hire between meetings just because we're, we've posted for a one-year teacher. As we all know, those positions go fast if one were to be offered. So to authorize him to hire in between our meetings if they were to find the right candidate.
Because we have an interview Thursday and we have another applicant that I'll, we'll reach out to tomorrow. So I'd rather not wait a month and potentially lose somebody.
Okay, so a motion by Jeremy. Can I have a second, Sherry? Any other discussion related to that? All in favor? Aye. Carrie, good. Scholarship?
No applications as of yet for that scholarship.
Okay.
We did receive them for the, Nancy Spalding and the MES Arts, but there was none that qualified for. I reached out specifically, when I got the other applications, I asked and they said, yes, it was posted properly, but there were no.
Is the application deadline closed? Do you know?
I don't know for certain how it works. I know that I have a bank of applications. I don't know if there's a open, like if there are some scholarships that have open deadlines, I don't know that.
Okay.
It's pretty open, ended it.
Okay, well, let's see if anything comes back next month. If not, we'll table it for the next year and try to promote it a little bit.
On a positive note, the PTO did authorize doing a second MES Arts scholarship. So they'll be providing four scholarships now. Two for Nancy Spalding and two for the MES Arts.
Nice.
So moving forward.
How do they go about doing those? Like choosing who gets those?
So applications come to me and then I send those applications to the committee and the committee returns their top ones to me and then if we need to consult, then we gather and they chat, they decide and I send the forms in.
Question? No, I just didn't know if we could make it a little more broad and see Madison students that applied. If we don't have anybody that's even applied for that specific scholarship, someone who's going to a science-related field even to broaden it a little bit.
Remember you guys talking about it, but could you just fill me in a little bit on what the scholarship is for? Is it?
So it was, you're gonna have to pull it up because there was a lot of little intricacies that came as, like you had to be a K, you had to go through the elementary school. It was more in the engineering and aeronautical field.
Yes.
What I remembered was-
Going into that field.
Edward Granville, left you three, five thousand dollars? Something. Some, some seed money in the early nineties and it's since grown to, yeah, a bit.
So field of interest, preferences will be given to students pursuing a program or career related to aviation. Example, aeronautics, aviation mechanics, flight operations. Fields aligned with technical skills in engineering, mechanics or transportation. Academic achievement, the student must demonstrate consistent academic performance with the focus on subjects related to their chosen field. Applications should articulate their career and aspirations. Essay submission, recommendations. Was there any other criteria in mind?
That was pretty much it, but I think the big one was that they were in the-
Okay, applicant must be graduating senior from Madison. The applicant must have attended Madison Elementary School for at least three years.
And then having that aviation component.
It was pretty narrow.
Yeah, that's too bad about the elementary parks. I feel like I know somebody that would qualify outside of that.
Is, that didn't-
They moved into town, like-
Is the five hundred to seven hundred and fifty word essay, you know, is that standard with what students are doing right now?
So the applications that I get, because so there's two different types of scholarships, there's traditional and non-traditional, so I believe I get the, I don't know which ones I get. They're all standard. It's a standard, same essay. Everybody writes the same essay and gets it, so it's not specific to either of our scholarships. It's something about, you know, your experience at KHS or something like that.
Work on them at school, I'm pretty sure.
So I have a question. Was that requirement part of the original Granville?
I think attending school here was part of the original.
I think that was about the only thing.
Right, that was like the-
Like pretty mandatory.
Yes.
Because the Granvilles were from-
Right.
From Madison.
Madison, so-
But the board chose to take it, the aviation route, which that wasn't.
That wasn't, but if-
That was kind of his background.
Right, exactly.
I mean, would we entertain a Madison student who didn't attend the elementary school going into the fields, into the related fields?
I'm just wondering if we, we think about if we don't get, like how we broaden it for next time.
Yeah, leave it as it is right now.
It sounds like we, we've got the, the arts and like more of a just in general.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if trade, if trade, someone attending a trade school maybe a scholarship that way or, I, I just think we as a group could probably come up some good ideas with broadening that scope.
And still looking at what the Granvilles had-
Honoring, yeah.
Okay, so let's leave it for now and then, and the nice thing is it doesn't-
The grant called again?
Uh, it's a, it's a scholarship.
Ed, Ed Granville's-
Edward Granville. They were, they were here in the thirties. Moving down into Springfield, Mass area.
You know, because what we could do, what we could do in the future too is remove the applicant must be a graduating senior, which would qualify somebody going into their second year of, of college as well.
Pretty sure Madison Historical Society was their house, who was it?
Oh, was it?
I believe so.
And you guys want to tear it down?
No, the Madison Historical Society, not the Madison Corner Schoolhouse.
Did they get Mrs. Slade again? Yes, no?
Do you know where the Granvilles lived?
They do have a place down on Pound.
Pound Road sounds familiar.
Okay.
I thought they had a house in so related too.
They did, their childhood point was named after one of their relatives somehow.
Good history coming out.
We're getting a history lesson tonight.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on from there. Discussion on the school clerk treasurer. Have not heard from anybody.
No, anyone who's interested.
Public service announcement. We need a school clerk and treasurer. Treasurer is- We need a school clerk and treasurer. Treasurer is much more needed quickly.
Could you maybe talk about what their responsibilities would be if somebody's watching?
So, the treasurer signs the checks every other week. Maintains a ledger balance with the deposits and.
Yeah, just like balancing the checkbook every month, and then at the end of the year, they do the treasurer's report. It really, you know, and then I help them with it. List revenues and then total orders paid or.
Yep, and the treasurer pays twenty-five hundred a year?
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
So. What's that?
I said I'm gonna find someone.
Imagine being charged with signing a check.
So, that was, that was a question that was gonna be asked. Do they need to be a Madison resident, or can we hire? Because I know that this town changed their policy or based on the because this is not an easy thing to find all the time. So, do we find out if we have to be, or if we can hire the position?
I think you can hire, but we, I, I, I don't think I'm going out on a limb here saying we would prefer to be a Madison resident.
Right. It's something, it's something on the ballot that we voted, right?
That is correct.
And so we would appoint someone if someone.
Right, exactly. And it's a one-year position always?
Madison historically has not kept treasurers for long.
No.
Someone's carrying them away.
You won't, you, you won't. Well, wait a minute, your return trip was much shorter.
My return trip was much.
Less than a year.
It didn't actually, it ended before it started.
Right.
Yes.
So, yes, so, and then we had.
That increase in the wages would help, and.
Right.
I don't know, maybe they just don't know the wages are increased, because we do pay more
Yeah.
than Freedom and Tamworth and do not have longevity.
Time commitment in general?
I think it's the location of the SAU office to.
So, you have to drive to the SAU to sign everything. And you're probably there, I mean, it's probably under an hour, an hour of being there. Every two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, depending on where you live.
And the documentation is given to you, you know, so you can take the deposits and everything.
I even sent it to you digitally.
So, you do all the work?
Pretty much.
Most of the work to help get it done.
Yeah, once I balance the checkbook, I will send, so you'll see what I say is open and clear, and where we deposit things.
Right.
You can sell that.
So.
Maybe that could be one of your scrolling things. If you need a.
And school district clerk, it's very, it's a very short period.
One meeting a year.
What, not really. So, the school district clerk is setting up for the annual meeting, making sure the ballots are ordered, the everything needed for the deliberative session and the annual, and the vote. Sloan has worked with Pat Ambrose to get a good job description together, and I'm happy to get that out there as well. But that, what's that?
Are the job descriptions on the website for the school?
I can get that. It's not really a job description, because it's a, it's an elective position. But the, the procedure manual, so to speak, that they've worked on, I can try to get from Sloan.
How do people let us know that they're interested? They just?
They can send an email to myself, to Mike, call me on my cellphone. I don't care. Scroll that number right across.
We will, Heather's great. She'll train you up, and no experience needed.
Right.
I watch the days, so.
Okay, all right, so come forward. We need you quick.
Does the school clerk get paid?
Yes. School clerk is five hundred.
I gotta see a budget.
I, um, so. Well, it's only one, right, one, one day of taking minutes.
Are you gonna take all the minutes?
Of the, just the deliberative session.
Just the deliberative.
And then finalize the, the vote.
And just preparing to make sure that everything's ready for the deliberative.
Correct. Education moderator, clerk and moderator is fourteen hundred in total. So, seven hundred dollars. All right, moving on up, second reading of GBEF dash R and EGA dash R, acceptable use internet procedures. The motion to approve, motion by Ed, second by Sherry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Hi, oh, sorry. I'll hold off till she gets, till we get there.
I think so.
I had a question on, but I don't know if we're talking, no, this is.
Uh, acceptable use. Which one did you have a question on?
Never mind, not that one.
Okay. So, page forty-two.
I circled a couple things.
Okay.
So, on page forty-three. I don't know why I circled that, but I circled number seven.
I must have thrown my papers all over.
Network for commercial or political activity. Like union-related things don't fall under that, right?
No.
That would be my only question that I can think of at the top of my head.
No, it would be for like if you're trying to like run a second business, or you're, you know, campaigning, you know, things like that.
That's it. I don't have any questions.
All right, any others, concerns, thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor? I agree. Any opposed or opposed? Carrie's. We already talked about default budget. Public comment?
I guess to Deb's point about the gym floor, because I think it's important. I think it's needed. Unfortunately, that it is eight thousand dollars over. So, I think if the process had been followed, you would have known, another decision was done correctly. You would have known you needed the hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And the only other thing, I mean, I would support that you, you're, if you're not gonna do it for another fifteen years, I think you should put your options in what you need, and if it's a one-twenty-eight or one-thirty, it is what it is.
And just for clarifying, we didn't.
That is correct.
We didn't vote this in. It was voted in on the floor. I just want to make sure.
It was brought on the floor. It wasn't brought by the board to the floor.
No, correct, correct.
It actually took other things away from what we had in the, in the pipeline.
You all remember what went on.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if people watching do though, because it does really make it seem like the board advanced this.
You all supported it. When it was, when it was suggested and whatever, you know, I didn't hear anybody say, well, I, we, I did hear, are we sure it's gonna cost a hundred and twenty thousand, and we were guaranteed by, or not guaranteed, we were assured by the volunteer coach parent presenting that he had looked into it. Now, I'm just saying, if you had done your due diligence as a board, you should have looked into it prior to. And the other point being is if it was that dangerous, and the coach should have gone to the rec, the rec should have gone to Heather, and if it was that much of an issue, it should have been from Heather to the superintendent to the board, we need to replace it now. Nobody would argue with that. So, it was just the process.
Thank you.
I believe one-twenty-five is what was put in, not one-twenty.
Yeah.
It just sounded like you just said one-twenty, and, and based on our original estimate, he came in actually lower than what he had first estimated us.
So, we had one-twenty-five, eight oh eight was an estimate, and it came in at one-twenty-five, five oh six.
And, and we can hope that we can get some of those add-ons, but if we get those and they cost more, it's gonna put us over.
And if we don't need to, I mean, if we don't need to make a decision until June, which would be the best, we could post the June meeting as a public hearing as well, to potentially spend, spend, uh, spend undesignated fund balance to make up the difference of the project, if that's, if that's the case, if not. But we can post it just to be sure.
Do we need to post to spend from that reserve fund?
Right, that's what I was thinking, question two.
No, but I, I think we should, we could post for that as well at the same time. I think the intent of that article was for that purpose. So, I think to have, to expend the one-twenty-five, no, we, we should be fine, because the vote just happened. It was put in for that purpose. It wasn't like we were taking out five years later for something.
Yeah, right.
So, I was just wondering too, because this, this was in the plans for twenty-seven, right? So, that means it, is there money in the CIP? Or would we have put all the money in at?
No, we would have put in money as we go, because we try to, the way it works is you look at and say, okay, in the next ten years, we're gonna have five hundred thousand dollars worth of projects. How much do we need to add for each of those to make it up? So.
Do we have any money in CIP that we could put towards this if it goes over the one-hundred?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so we, we could possibly have the option of using CIP money rather than.
Than using undesignated fund balance as well, yes.
There's a hundred, there's a hundred and forty thousand in CIP.
Right.
So, that was why I wanted to post. I would rather post for both, because I personally would rather use the CIP money.
Yep, okay.
Than out of the fund balance.
And I was like, CIP is always a working document. I mean, there may be things we defer this year, simply because we don't have the bandwidth to handle another project. So, that, it, it defers the project, it defers the cost a little bit, because we're not spending it in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna push it up twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Even the costs are estimates.
And the costs are estimates. They may come in higher or lower as we go, so I, I have, I mean, I adjust this far more than I want to, but it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's living everything.
So, yes.
I don't think it's any fault of the board necessarily that this money came in the way it did. I, I, I'm more concerned that it, it came from someone in the town, and there wasn't due diligence put before the town to say, this is the amount that the warrant should be. It was just a, you know, I, I think there probably was a little bit of knowledge, but I think if we were to do a project like that, there would have been a lot more looking into in a.
Right, generally, generally, your, your, and bid comes in just under what you had asked for, to make sure that you have enough.
Right, yeah.
Any other public comments? Yes.
Just had, something came to me when you were talking about the scholarship, just for information. I sit on the board of the Madison Scholarship Committee as well, and I do have a, I do have a concern about procedure or and I don't know exactly what I'm gonna, but I'll talk to my committee, because we, we only have three applicants for the Madison Scholarship Committee, which is a guaranteed, a guaranteed award for any Madison student.
Phenomenal.
It does, it does bother me, and we, we have our meeting tomorrow, so I will be bringing this up to them, that even for our art scholarship, which has criteria like yours, a more narrow criteria, we had maybe a couple of them all, but we have way more than three, and that the Madison Scholarship, which is a guarantee, you know, all you have to do is apply. All you have to do is check a box.
Right.
At the high school, that we only have three applicants for, so it bothers me that there are kids out there that are not taking advantage of that. And I don't know why that is happening.
Are they pushing it the way they, they have in the past? I mean, I remember when my kids were there, and that's, we're talking six, seven years ago now, but it was almost like a, a right after the first of the year project that you worked on with the guidance counselor, and I mean, Cheryl Fertato was my kid's guidance counselor, and she was on them, you know, and, and it was, no, you, 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 you qualify for this, you could.
They're on TikTok, they'll find it.
Right.
I think that might be a great topic for the next thirteen-nine meeting, about how scholarships are rolled out and promoted and us to get a, a good handle. So, I can reach out to Amy.
It's the same, right, the same essay, it's everything.
Right.
Why are they clicking on the Madison Art Scholarship?
But not the.
Not clicking on the Madison Towns.
Has that been the trend for other years, Tim?
Not really, because, you know, we've had, I mean, there were, there's always a couple of kids on the, why did that student not apply? And, but not to this degree. I mean, this is, this was a big class.
That's huge.
And I know, you know, as I say, I look at the applications from our art scholarship, and it's like, that child not, not here at this table, but so I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is.
And I, I remember going to the scholarship night, and just the amazing amount of scholarships from the valley as a whole exceeds that of, you know, my, my nieces and nephews were in Bedford, and it's a much more affluent community. And my mother called me and said, you know, they, they gave out the girls' scholarship night, they gave out forty-five thousand dollars worth of scholarships. I said, that's funny, we went to one too, and they gave out two hundred thousand. You know, and it's, so that they're not.
And the Madison, when I was on the school board in the early nineteen nineties, I sat on the scholarship committee as part of one of the committees. And so that scholarship's been around since the, you know, early nineties. So, it's not like, and it's never, I mean, it's continued, there's golf tournaments, there's the duck race. It's not like, and they, you know, I think it's well-publicized, but I don't understand why that box isn't being checked off.
Looking at the Nancy Spalding applications, there are six.
Six.
So, six applied for one of.
You should have at least six for them.
Right.
I mean, I was on that committee years ago as well, and you, you just sort of cringe, I mean, and it was a lot of money. But if you had fifteen students, it's like, okay, how do we divide fifteen into the, you know, and every, because everybody got something.
Yeah.
So, it's not unusual to have, but again, how many kids do we have at the high school? I mean, you know, when we talked earlier.
Right, see, high school seniors. It was, I think it was eighteen.
But how many are going to college?
Right.
True, true.
It's six for both, six applicants for both.
Are they the same six?
Well, I didn't, I was scrolling really quick.
That's all right. I just figured, to my sheet, if somebody can find that.
Heather, do you think we could maybe put it in like, you know how like a lot of kids here have like siblings that are older? I wonder if we put it in the newsletter at all?
So, they're eighteen seniors.
If you're a senior, I don't know, just a thought.
Probably even half of the kids going on to secondary education.
Phone call to the guidance people who are running the scholarships and say, what are these Madison kids doing?
Yeah, I'd be interested to, to hear what SAU nine says about the whole process, because again, maybe it's another case of that numbers are just dwindling, and there just aren't kids expecting to go to college, and the parameters need to be widened. I know some current college students that could use some more scholarships.
But the, the school counseling office should be able to give you statistics on that too, as to what, you know, Madison students or plans are for post-graduation.
Right, I, I'll, I'll reach out to Amy so we can get, have, she can have ample time to do her research on that.
Do these scholarships include trade schools as well?
Yes, most, most of them do.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
When my kids were there, they, there were kids that were going to, you know, a two-year trade or whatever, and yes. And those kids, honestly, the trades clean up sometimes. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little things out there that, that that's what they, you know, there was the, the bike group, the motorcycle group that, you know, they, they were into the machine shops and things like that, and I mean, it was just left and right. So, there's so many. But yes, if we could get that added to that, that would be greatly appreciated. Other public comments? Board comments?
I just wanted to make a comment and maybe partially a request, but I did review the STAR data that you provided to us last time, and I did go on the Renaissance website and look up what kind of reports there are available with STAR, and it, I don't know, it, it talked about a growth report, which I, I tend to find a little bit more valuable than like an achievement report, because if a student's made a year's worth of growth in a year, but they're still not proficient, that to me shows me that they, that we were doing our job as a, as an education. that we were doing our job as a, as an educational system. So I, I was just wondering, because I am concerned in looking at some of the data or the data that was provided and looking at, this one was the math to see that as a school, 61%. If I just add up the percents of the whole school, fall below the proficient and then 40-ish above. So as a math person, that hurts my heart.
Sure.
And I don't know if this is reassuring or not, but that's not far off from the state average, so I mean.
Yeah.
We have work to do, we have work to do here and at the state, absolutely.
But I, I wanted to throw it out just because I know probably there's gonna be another round of this for the spring assessments. And so maybe growth would be a little bit clearer of a picture of how we're doing. And I don't know if that can be done with the Dibbles. I know there isn't a, there never has been a historical data feature, but listening to the MTSS presentation, I'm sure that, that that data is available. I just don't know if it's in a form that can be shared. But again, just to kind of see growth rather than one snapshot picture.
Others? Seeing none? Second, so moving second is 8:26. Anybody opposed can stay.
It looks like in the like top left, it looks like possibly a leash field, but I can't tell if that's where like the propane tank is.
Oh, were you looking at the?
Those plans right there, I have them in my office.
Yeah.